Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to get started. This is our 5:30 presentations. And first up, we've got the Palm Springs Airport Master Plan presentation. And we have some individuals here that are going to introduce themselves. And Ms. Pye, you would like to say a few words about this, since you represent us at the airport.
Yes. I want to mention how important this airport is to our region. This airport allows for residents in the Coachella Valley cities, including Desert Hot Springs, to reach destinations throughout the United States and Canada without driving all the way to LAX or other airports in the region. This is an asset to our community and economic engine for our region, and some new developments are underway to modernize it and improve the passenger experience, passenger experience, and provide our area with even more destination and year-round service. Joining us tonight is Mark, I'm not going to try and say your last name, Mark.
Mark Wire.
I'm not going to say your last name, who is leading the stakeholder outreach for the Airport Council and update on the exciting airport plan, which the airport plan goes to 2042. So please welcome Mark and Victoria.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Protem Pye, and thank you so much for your service on the Airport Commission. We really appreciate it. And we really appreciate Desert Hot Springs for providing this forum for us to speak about the exciting developments at Palm Springs Airport. Joining with me is Victoria Carpenter. Victoria is the Airport Administration Manager for Palm Springs Airport. And after the presentation, we're happy to answer any questions that you all have. So let me just dive right into this. Okay, so what is an Airport Master Plan? Well, it's a federally required document to help the airport plan strategically for the future and identify new projects to support long-term growth and safety. This is only a plan, so there, all the components of the plan still have to go through separate funding, environmental processes, in order to actually get completed. But this is a guiding framework for the next 20 years for Palm Springs Airport. So why do we need an Airport Master Plan? So it's about planning now to meet future demand. So the idea of the Palm Springs Airport Master Plan is to preserve iconic elements of the airport. As you see in that photo to the right, that's the iconic Wexler Terminal. The iconic mid-century modern design is a real key component of our master plan that we want to preserve. We want to create a better passenger experience. We want to comply with the latest airport safety requirements, and we want to begin new sustainability initiatives. This is all really about accommodating our future growth, because the airport that was built, was built to accommodate 1.5 million annual passengers. Today, we're well above that. We're beyond 3 million annual passengers at Palm Springs Airport, and that's expected to double by 2042. In addition, we have an incredible amount of tourism and growth within the Coachella Valley. Up and down the valley, we've seen 4% increase in visitors between 2017 and 2022, and we all know that the residential boom continues within the Coachella Valley, outpacing California and outpacing the United States with 5% increase. With all of that growth, and we know that people are flying more frequently than they ever have before. So 10, 15 years ago, you may have taken one flight per year. Now, people are up to 1.4, 1.5 flights per year. So with all of that, there's just more demand than ever for air travel. That also has an impact on parking. As you can see here, parking demand today versus 2040, it more than doubles. So we have a lot of needs in order to make sure that we have a continued great passenger experience for people who are using the airport and our visitors. So what does a master plan process look like? So there is pre-planning, there's investigation, there's solutions, and then there's implementation. Right now, we are going through a stakeholder outreach, we're going through the investigative phase, and we're looking for solutions. We have worked through this over the past year, and Harry, the Airport Director, has asked that we go and meet and do presentations to the cities up and down the Coachella Valley, like Desert Hot Springs, to get feedback and thoughts on this plan. We are making adjustments to that and hearing that feedback, and that's the process that we're going to go through as we work through the implementation of this master planning process. So what have we heard so far? What people like about Palm Springs Airport? They love how quaint it is. They love how easy it is. They love the charm. They love the indoor-outdoor. They want us to consider preserving the walking distance. They love how it's built on the human scale. As I mentioned earlier, the Wexler Terminal is iconic. We want to preserve that and enhance that and use that as inspiration for the rest of the development on the site. We also want to maintain the primary access at De Quise and El Cielo. So these things we're hearing and we are taking very seriously as we build out the master plan for the next 20 years. So about three months ago, the Palm Springs City Council has decided and leaned into Alternative 1A as the master plan design and layout that they want to pursue, with two kind of main exceptions. One is they really want us to study the location of where the rent-a-car center is going to be. That is in that bright orange on the bottom left-hand side. That is the location that has been identified, but they also want us to study alternative locations. So that process is underway now. The second big component of this is to study the traffic impacts. We want to make sure that there's a nice flow with all the streets surrounding the airport. And so those two things are being studied right now, and the plan is to come back to Palm Springs City Council sometime in November. There's going to be one more airport open house to talk about the master plan in early November and get additional feedback from the community. So the idea here is, you know, those 10 things that are listed there on the side, you know, kind of lay out that plan for the next 20 years. This gives you some terminal renderings of what that looks like. So you see the rent-a-car center location. Again, there's various options. There's another option being considered on the south side of the airport, and you'll see the blue are new terminals, and then you'll see kind of the Wexler building right there in the center. This is a view whenever you leave the airport and you look kind of, this is north, this would be the location of the rent-a-car center. That is if the city council selects this as its final location. I want to make note that sustainability is at the heart of the master plan. The airport master plan will align with existing city sustainability policies. We plan to use solar, drought-tolerant landscape like desert cacti, and we want to do all we can to implement recycling programs and infrastructure improvements to support electric vehicles and aircraft, as well as do all we can to connect the airport with public This here is a layout of what the timeline looks like. So we're currently going through the process now on the stakeholder engagement, getting feedback. Once that is all finalized, then we would move into an environmental impact report process, and there's some parallel paths as we lead into a construction phase, basically starting in 2028 and ending shortly after 2029. This would be for Phase 1, which is an $880 million cost. And I want to make note of this, that airports fund themselves. So this does not require the use of any local taxes. The airport and its major projects are all funded by concessions, they're funded by parking fees, and they're funded by federal grants and also landing fees. So each, every cup of coffee, airline ticket, rent-a-car that you rent at the airport, it all funds itself. So I want to thank you for your time. I want to make note that any official comment on the master plan needs to be submitted through palm springs airport masterplan.com. That captures all of those comments publicly. So anyone online that has comments or thoughts, please do so directly through that website. We're happy to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you for the presentation. It's exciting, really exciting. I'll start. Anyone? You did a great job.
I was going to ask, how do you fund it? And you stated it, so I'm done.
All right. Thank you.
There was talk of overseas airlines, you know, jumbo jets. Is that in the works?
Go ahead and speak on that. So we're currently doing a study to figure out if a federal inspection site is feasible for our airport, which we are putting out that study, and we are really working towards that so that we can put that into our airport layout plan.
Those are considerably noisier, aren't they?
Well, the one thing, though, that's happening with new aircraft is that even though that they're getting larger, they're getting quieter engines. So that's something we're taking into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I thought I heard you say electric aircraft? Is that right?
Electric vehicles.
Oh, I thought I heard aircraft, okay.
Not yet.
Maybe one day.
Thank you guys again for coming out, and we'll get this out on our YouTube channel, and lots of people will see it.
Wonderful. Thanks again.
Thank you. Mr. Nunez, would you join me down front? So we have an opportunity to recognize youth in our community, and we do it on a regular basis, a lot with youth sports and not always with dance groups. So this is a great opportunity for us to highlight some youth in our community and what they're doing for our community. Mr. Nunez had reached out to me a couple months ago and said, this group is doing fantastic things through our community, and we really need to recognize them. And so we've been trying to get a time that would work, and perfect timing. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the program. The Grupo Florico, and I can't, how do you say the last?
Polclorico.
Polclorico. I have a terrible time enunciating.
Polclorico.
Thank you. They had started in Desert Hot Springs in 2011, and Rosalia and Annabelle, your sisters?
Yes.
Had started the group, and they have traveled throughout South America and throughout our region here, performing. It's pretty inspiring to see. They have, it's not just kids either, it's young men and women up to 25 years old, so from five-year-old to 25-year-olds are participating in this program. They've received over 50 trophies, recognitions over time for their dancing, and they've, what was the other thing I saw was pretty awesome, is that not only do they mentor kids in this dance group, but they also help kids get higher education. And in this bio, they've had young people attend UC Santa Cruz, UC San Jose, UC San Bernardino, someone became a police officer, the San Bernardino Police Department, US Coast Guard, US Air Force, and other colleges. So they're not just promoting, let's go do something fun, but they're promoting that you have to have a lifestyle and get higher education. So that's awesome to see with our youth in our community. So we wanted to take a few minutes and just say thank you for what you're doing in our community and recognize you with this certificate from the mayor's office. On behalf of the mayor and the council, we wanted to recognize you, and I wanted to give Roger a few minutes to say something.
I, there's nothing for me to say. I think they've done all the hard work. What really stands out to me is that they've gone to Mexico and competed with very, very talented dancers and come in second or third.
We have a...
Well, I'll let you speak right now. But I mean, this is the quality of, and knowing that they're coming from California and a little pueblo like Desert Hot Springs, and make a name for themselves in Mexico is outstanding. That is something I could never imagine, and I can just say just keep it up, keep up the good work, and please, if you have any, you know, you would like to say anything, please.
I just want to add very quick, because I think that's one of our biggest accomplishments. We participated in the, oh my gosh, I'm nervous, I'm sorry. The McKellen Theater's Open Call, and we won first our best dance group award. So we were the best. Best dance performance.
What are your names?
I'm Jessica.
Benito.
What's your name? Christine?
Uh, Gio.
And Karen.
And how long you guys been dancing?
I've been dancing for like 11 years.
11 years now? Wow, that's pretty incredible. Well, keep up the great work, keep representing our community, and thank you so much. And on behalf of the city council, the mayor, we just wanted to recognize you for your service in the community, because it is a service. You're giving a service to youth, and you're giving a service for us to be entertained. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And Russell. Thank you for your support.
Supporting us.
Can you all stand up in the back, and I'll get a photo with everybody?
Yes, come back in. Trying to get my pants, I wrote all the wrong jackets today.
House member Gardner, can you scooch one way or the other? There you go.
Someone's OCD came up.
Well, I just couldn't see him. All right, perfect. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Senator.
Thank you for all supporting us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have about 15 minutes. We'll start the regular meeting at 6 o'clock. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call and order the City of Desert Hot Springs regular meeting of the City Council, and the City Council serving as the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency board for Tuesday, September 17, 2024. This is our 6 p.m. regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bets.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Present.
Councilmember Nunez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Pye.
Present.
And Mayor Madison.
Present. Good to do a moment of silence tonight. So as a lot of people know, I've been a longtime volunteer with Little League, and we had, which was coming up on your screen today, Adam Rich, who you'll see as the father of those four beautiful kids and his wife. He was very young. He'd been volunteering for Little League for the last few years and became an umpire, volunteer, ran a fundraiser last year, suddenly passed away and left his family. So with that said, it's something close to my heart when it comes to people volunteering for their community, and I think he needs to be, you know, remembered for those. So we're going to take a moment of silence. Thank you. I'm going to invite up Pastor Thomas Turan from the Covenant Church here in Desert Hot Springs. He's going to do our invocation tonight.
We're on.
You are.
Thanks. Let's pray. Father, we do thank you for your kindness, Lord God. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for your grace, Lord God. And tonight, as the decisions are being made, as concerns are being brought, Lord, matters, challenges, whatever they may be, I pray we look to your wisdom, Lord God, to your patience, to your love, to your kindness, to your insight, Lord God, in that the decisions that are made, Lord God, for the success and the prosperity and the safety of our community, of our city, Lord God. Bless these leaders, Lord. Bless their families. Bless their night, Lord God. Bless the people here, Lord, so that everybody gets what they need, and as they pursue, Lord God, your success beyond this city and prosperous, Lord, in Jesus's name. Amen?
Amen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you please stand, Mr. Gardner, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, I'm guessing there's no report of action since we did not have any closed session?
There was no closed session.
All right. And at this time, we're going to approve the agenda, and along with that, we'll be approving the, or pulling items from the consent calendar. Before we get into a motion, is there anyone that would like to pull any items from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, pulling items 6, 7, 8, and 11. For discussion.
You don't have a conflict on item number 8?
We're debating that. I'll decide before we...
Well, I think you need to decide now, because if you're pulling it, you're going to make, you're requesting reports and actions. So unless someone else from the council wants to pull this, I'd ask that you make that decision now if you have a conflict or not.
You know what? I'll go the safe route. I'll have a conflict, we won't pull it.
Does anyone else want to pull item 8? Okay, so we're going to pull your requesting's items 6, 7, and 11? Those are the correct ones? 6, 7, 11? Okay. So on items 5, 9, 10 of the consent calendar, is anybody in the public that would like to speak on those items? All right, is there a motion from the council?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
So your motion is to approve the consent calendar, the agenda?
Yes.
Not item 6, 7, or 11? Okay. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
We're going to move to public comments. If you haven't had a chance, and you want to speak in public comments, there's blue cards in the back there. Just hand it to the city clerk, and they'll get them up here. At this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are be directed to the city council and should be devoid of any personal tax. Members of public are expected to maintain a professional, courteous decorum during public comments. Barbara Valdez, Vala Des, sorry. I always miss that extra A.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Barbara Sepulveda Valdez. I have been acclimating in my new city. I am a member of the Women's Club, a volunteer at the library, a pickleball student, and up until recently, I was a volunteer at the Mizell Senior Center, which brings me to the reason I am here tonight with much emotion. On Wednesday, July 3, 2024, at approximately 1:22 p.m., I was in the Carl May Building. I tripped on a yellow robe that was dropped on the floor attached to a bingo machine. I fell on my knees. I braced myself with both arms extended. The director, Melanie Lyons, saw me fall, took a few steps toward me, and said, are you okay? I said, I don't know. I need some time to assess myself. Then she left the building. A senior member assisted in getting me up slowly and carefully. I know we'll need surgery on both my right and my left rotator cuff. I am in pain. I am in pain all the time. I live alone, and I push through every day with my everyday life and responsibilities. The question that I have today, this evening, is what is the city's policy or responsibility if a volunteer gets hurt on city property? At the very least, should an incident report have been done? I am aware that there are cameras in the Carl May Building. I also will maybe say that the tape is probably not there from July the 3rd. I do have witnesses who would not have a problem coming forward. I would at this time like to request two council members meet with me so that I can discuss some other concerns in reference to the senior center. There's much retaliation. There's many things going on that are just unbelievable, and I feel that the senior center should be a safe place for seniors to go. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Ma'am, according to California law, we can't have a back and forth on these items.
Okay, I understand.
So what we will do is, any of your concerns should be going through the city manager's office, and I'd be happy to schedule time with Ms. Pye, who represents our city council for the senior center. The two of us would be happy to schedule some time with you.
Would that only be Pye, Jan Pye?
I said myself and Jan Pye.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next speaker is going to be Juanita Clifton.
Good evening to all the city council members. I'm here today to address the Desert Hot Springs Senior Center and the director, Melanie Lyons. I just want to speak in her defense of different accusations of negative nature that have been brought against her and possibly even are trying to take actions to threaten her employment. You know, these things have been done throughout the senior center. They're like, different things are being done in groups throughout the center, people going to different tables and causing actually an environment that is less than pleasant to be around. And it also causes havoc, dissension, and division amongst the members of the center because they're looking at people that are there and have been there, and they're causing these things. You know, going to table to table, trying to get people to vote with them so they can do something against Ms. Lyons. You know, so here, I would just caution the city council in a pleasant and mild way that you would please take into account that some people, you know, have made it their life, their life goal to cause programs, directives. This is new coming in. Ms. Lyons has done a great job at the center. She's had her challenges with people being, you know, what do you say, there all the time and want to commit, because people need to commit to programs, right? So she's doing everything she can to do that. But I'm just saying that this isn't just the first time accusations are being made against a director, and it's almost the same people making these accusations. So it's, you know, it's a constant from people going throughout the center trying to cause havoc. It's a hostile environment, and please take into account that when you hear from the same people different things that are trying to destroy the positive things that Ms. Lyons is trying to improve in our center, that we need to really consider the source from which it's coming from. And I think all people do that, you know, in your positions. You look at the, if it's a constant, if there's no, you know, if it's a constant complaint from the same people, there must be personal things in their own life that aren't giving them the satisfaction they need in their own lives. So they're trying to destroy a pathway of positivity coming to the seniors. So I'd just like for you to take that into consideration, that Ms. Lyons is doing a great job. No, she's not perfect. Maybe she did miss something.
Thank you very much.
As we all do.
That's going to be three minutes, but thank you so much for your comments.
Amen, thank you.
I don't have any other blue speaker cards. Would anybody like to speak on items not on the agenda tonight? This will be your three minutes to be able to do this, or you can wait till public open forum at the end of the agenda. I see nobody else coming forth. We're going to move into the city manager's report. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Wilms.
Thank you, City Manager Lukino. Tonight, we're going to have Jeffrey Buckeye, our Administrative Services Director, provide financial updates to the city council.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council members. So I'd like to point out, these are the financial highlights for the last fiscal year, fiscal year 2324. These are preliminary and unaudited numbers, so they could change as we finish with the financial statements and have them audited. But where we are at this point, the last fiscal year, we had 30, over $32 million in revenue, which was at 98% of what was budgeted. In 2223, we had over $29 million, which was 90% of that year's budget, and two years ago was at $29.9 million, which was at 95% of the budget. Last year's expenditures were at over $33.2 million, which is at 96% of the amended budget. Two years ago, we are at $34.5 million, which was 98% of the budget, and I'm sorry, fiscal year 22, 2122 was then $29.2 million, which was 89% of the budget.
Ms. Wilms?
That concludes our updates.
Thank you. Let me do the council member reports, mayor and council member reports, Mr. Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start with me. I only have one thing. I just want to acknowledge that yesterday was Mexican Independence Day. I just want to give congratulations to our brothers and sisters in Mexico and here in the United States. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And that's different than Cinco de Mayo, because everybody always thinks Cinco de Mayo is that day. That's not that. Ms. Pye?
Mission Springs Water District and the Palm Springs Cemetery District, 1...
Mission Springs Water District and the Palm Springs Cemetery District won awards during the California Special District Association Annual Conference, which was held at the Renaissance Esmeralda Resort and Spa in Palm Desert. Awarded was the district, for each of us was the District of Distinction. The District of Distinction is an accreditation program that enables districts to demonstrate to their communities, legislators, and other key stakeholders their commitment to operate in a sound, responsible manner. District is applied for the designation as a District of Distinction by submitting financial audits, policies, and procedures, and proof of training received by directors and executive staff. Showcase your district efforts to be among the best and take your district to the next level. The award is for transparency, special district governance, clean audits, clean policy slash procedures, board and staff professional development, and district manager for our full board and general manager. To continue this certification, we must apply to renew our status every three years. Separate from that, the Mission Springs ribbon cutting of the Nancy Wright Regional Water Reclamation Facility is on September 27th at 1999 Marengo Road at 9:30. September 12th, I attended the strategic plan which you got earlier from 9 to around 1:30. And what you got was what we discussed during that opportunity. On Wednesday, 9/13th, I attended the mayor's, that all mayor's and tribal members' presentation. Mayor Mattis was part of the panel, and I attended it with member, with council member Gardner and council member Betts. On 9/7th, now, let me back up a little bit. On, council member Nunez and I submitted a $1,000 grant to do the right thing. Also, through the RAP Foundation, the board awarded her $5,000. And this was a good thing, I attended the PS, Palm Springs Unified School District Diversity Conference at the Palm Springs Convention Center. Gerald, these two are Desert Hot Springs students from the high school. And I wanted to say to Dr. Tony Senore.
Pretty close.
Okay, I said it close. And Dr. Nicole Crawford, who is the diversity coordinator, and the board took a serious risk at this presentation. They had the students speak, and they spoke very, very eloquently. They spoke about what they were thinking about, and they did it very, very nicely. The gentleman is Naim Muhammad, and the lady is Brianna Mack. Naim spoke about so, Taste of Soul. And they have this at the high school every year, but he talked about it that Black history isn't just about slavery. It isn't just about Martin Luther King. And he wished that in his studies, he was learning more about that. Brianna talked about wanting mentors. And it is something to listen to. One of the workshops was about listening, and listening to the children. And I appreciate Mr., I'm gonna say, Dr. Tony. When we were given, we were given a questionnaire about what we wanted in a superintendent. And I went to his legislation days that, at that time, and I told him, he was exactly what I wanted. During that, he had all students talk about what they were doing in their schools. Usually, it's adults that are talking, but we got to hear from the students. And I commended these two for telling what they thought, and it was honest. And Mr. Councilman Nunez, I'm gonna do what he told me to do. He told me, "Do not talk about sports, especially at the high school anymore." And I won't.
They were undefeated up to last week, and we talked about superstitions, Van, Jan. Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really happy to see our new changeable message sign going in on Indian Canyon, Danny. Hopefully, we can have it powered up and tested soon. Long time coming, 2019, six years. So, and I know that one's been a challenge, so it's really cool to see it going up. Hopefully, we'll get it lit up pretty soon. Wanted as well to note, and we had a, I got a, an email from, from a lady here in Desert Hot Springs, and she says, "Not enough people read the paper," and they didn't see this. And I wanted to note that the Desert Sun did a really, really fantastic article outlining the successes that we've had with our spa revitalization ordinance that we adopted a year or so ago. And they highlighted three really great spas here that normally don't get a lot of attention. Azure Palm, Miracle Manor, across from Cabot's, and the new Glamping Resort that's part of and behind Aqua Soleil. And it's available on the Desert Sun website, and the paywall is down now because it's been up for over a week, so it should be free. You might go check that out on their webpage. Just a couple of outside meetings. We had a Coachella Valley Conservation Commission meeting last week, purchased another couple of small parcels here in Desert Hot Springs. But we spent a lot of time discussing the need for more monitoring and maintenance of our conservation lands, and how our new ranger program is going to fit into that, and how it's developing, and how our joint efforts with Desert Rec should help come out. So I'm really looking forward to seeing how the commission moves forward with maintaining the land that we've already purchased, particularly that here in Desert Hot Springs, and, you know, addressing issues with trash and homelessness and illegal off-road vehicles and things like that. Was, was happy to see that our own Sally Hedberg, a lot of you know her, a lot of us know her, she got some grant funding for homeless outreach efforts and for Friends of the Desert Hot Springs Library from the Burger Foundation, gave her a nice check here at City Hall this week, last week, last week. And attended the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce Mayor's Lunch with Council Member Pye, Council Member Betts, and Mayor did a great job outlining the wonderful things going on here in the city. And lastly, had a Coachella Valley Mosquito Vector Control Board meeting, and all good news there. We have no mosquitoes detected this year with St. Louis encephalitis virus, which is really amazing. And West Nile in the East Valley is declining sharply, and we're moving out of mosquito season. So that's all good news. That's all I've got.
Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Years ago, I met with Myrna Flores, who's then the director of the Center for Economic Training. Had occasion about a few months ago to reach out to Melissa Correa, who's now the new director. We've had a couple of meetings. If you know about the Center for Economic Training, CET, it's a 50-year-old nonprofit that provides job training in HVAC, air conditioning, and electrical training, which helps people get to nicer jobs. They're looking for a location in our city. I reached out to the city manager, see what we can do to find something. So anyhow, just wanted to let everybody know that that's in the works. I had a couple of questions for staff, and I wanted to get some clarification. Business owner's been asking on the, dealing with the homeless and the SET team. So my understanding is, we have an officer at night, but right now, we have a shortage of staff in the PD, so they can't do that full-time.
So he is working at night, yes, but his priority at night is homeless. So he was otherwise working during the day, but yes.
And then the plan is, at some point in time, to have an officer and to code people working full-time? Do we, did that get going?
So there's one liaison officer from the police department, and then we have a dedicated code enforcement officer, plus a dedicated compliance maintenance technician from code as well. So there'll be three individuals that will be solely dedicated to these endeavors.
Okay, and so, but that's not up and running yet, but we're working on it.
So there's two that are out in rotation right now, and we are finalizing the background for the compliance maintenance officer. So in very short order, we should see all three positions on the street. Two right now are out there.
Great, okay, perfect, thank you. And the Hurricane Hillary reimbursement, we got all that money back, right?
It's in the process, I think, we were just talking about this this past week, by the end of the calendar year and/or the end of the fiscal year, we should be receiving all of it.
Okay. And I'm getting lots of calls from people regarding the vacation rentals and code enforcement, and they're wondering, I know at one time, we had had a full, you know, we had a staffing, we had this program, we're supposed to track everything, and that kind of went by the wayside. We had two code officers that would go out to the houses. Now, we've stopped that, and people are advised to call the non-emergency police number now? Is that, that's how that's working?
Yeah, so we did have a, you know, as part of last year's budget, we did have a contract, you know, on a weekend. Through adjustments within the budget, we ended up adding a staff person, a code person for that weekend. Giving staffing challenges currently, we pulled that weekend person off during the day, and they are calling PD, mainly due for the low number of calls that we were getting.
Okay, but if, anyhow, for whatever reason, we, if somebody has a complaint, then what we have is call the normal, regular PD line to deal with that. Okay, good, I want to get that clarified. Animal Hospital, that transfer of ownership was supposed to happen in June, did it?
The transfer of ownership has been completed, so the city does own that parcel, and that property.
Oh, no, but we were gonna transfer, it was supposed to transfer, then the contract to Animal Samaritans. Did that transfer happen? I thought it was supposed to...
That is not complete.
Okay, and then, because, so obviously, they're not going to be up and operating, just getting lots of questions, people want to know about Animal Hospital. So that's not going to be operating by then to September, it was announced.
That is correct, so we're still working on negotiating with a potential provider for that location.
Okay, great, thank you. We received notice about Varner Road, and I really appreciate the update from the city manager. We get reports from the city manager, and so he provided us this update. And anybody who drives that road knows it's really, really bad. And Tom Moe, who gets up here, you know, lets us know almost every meeting. But there's a section from date Palm to Palm Drive that's scheduled to get resurfaced. And from what I learned, there's something called PSNEs, which Danny knows, but those are plans, specifications, and estimates, and those have to be done to map out where the road's gonna be, correct? So those are supposed to be completed by the end of 2027. My question is, what's gonna happen to that road between now and 2027? Because it's really bad. Is there any type of plans to do some temporary grade and resurfacing or anything? Because I don't think it's gonna last that long, you got that four-wheel drive to go down that thing pretty soon.
Yeah, it's outside of the city boundaries, so yeah, there's nothing from the city addressing...
Scott, is there anything at Sebag you heard about on that?
Absolutely, I'll answer that in my comments.
Okay, great. And then, I presume funding is in the works on that also?
I'll answer it in my comments.
Okay, perfect, we'll wait with made in breath for your answer. On my meetings, I attended Southern California Association of Governments, and the conversation was there was on zero emissions goods movement. That's interesting, how we can get trucks to move without putting out diesel fumes, we'll see. Tended Sebag Energy and Environment, attended the all valley mayor's and tribal leaders' luncheon, that was good. And then over the weekend, I had the pleasure of attending the Ballet Folklorico. I have trouble with that one, too. Folklorico, right? Roger? Shut none of that, I got it. My second language is Spanish, or is Chinese, not Spanish, sorry. Anyhow, it was really good to watch these kids, they were just, we saw them here in a presentation, and you can hardly recognize them for, you know, their costumes, and anyhow, I was honored to be able to make some awards and presentations of people who make that work. And I think, as the mayor pointed out in the presentation, the parents and everybody that puts those things on and everything they do for the kids, it keeps them focused, it keeps them, you know, on a good path, and it's really, really good for our city. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Oh, wait a minute, I do have one more thing. The Desert Healthcare District put out an announcement for $1 million through a request proposals for mitigating, mitigating air quality-related health conditions. We lost out on at least a million dollars on this before, had to turn it back. Are we pursuing any of this money from Desert Healthcare District?
Potentially, you know, we'll look at that, you know, as an option. You know, air quality monitors would be a great thing, I think, you know, to have within the city, so.
We had a presentation at Sebag NE on the air quality monitors, and I don't have time to go into that now. It should be, it should be on the agenda for a council discussion because we need air quality monitors here in our city and in the right location. But anyhow, I would, I'm just thinking, we're probably in line for all million dollars of this, with as much money from Desert Healthcare District that's gone everywhere else in the valley but to us. So can you go, just go get that, tell them, just write them a check? Okay, thank you. I'm done.
All right, so I attended Riverside County Transportation Commission, I'm the representative for the city of Desert Hot Springs, and nothing really pertained directly to the city of Desert Hot Springs. There was a long debate on $178 million, what they call a drop ramp in, I believe, Corona. Not a lot of people thought Riverside County Transportation would be spending $178 million on a ramp that's going to allow emergency vehicles and two buses a day to use, when there's a lot more traffic issues there. So it was an interesting discussion, obviously, we don't have a dog in a fight, but it was something that we wanted to debate over time, so we're gonna start with engineering and go from there, and see if they can move money around. The Veterans Center here in Desert Hot Springs is now open. We talked about this at the beginning of the year, there was a couple of veterans that came to me and said that they wanted more services within our community, and we thought, well, what a great opportunity we have. We have a facility, the Henry Lozano Center at the Gaudy Desco Park, which is located off of Hacienda and Aurora Drive, and it's not being utilized. So, well, it's being utilized sometime for different events, but not utilized on a regular basis. So we started a committee, and we reached out to multiple agencies, and the county stepped up, and they started services there. So the Desert Hot Springs Veterans Center is open, second and fourth Wednesday of each month for benefit counseling and claim assistance. So it's open, I believe, 8:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon. And you can stop by there and meet with the county, in hopes that this program will grow with others. I know the VFW's talked about doing programs out of there, and we've talked to our congressman's office and our state assembly's office, and they have other opportunities possibly in the future. So we'll see how that program grows, pretty excited about that. The greater, as alluded to by others up here, the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce had their annual mayor's and tribal leaders' luncheon. It's always a, almost everybody shows up, so you have eight mayors, you have a couple tribal leaders, and we all get four minutes to talk about our city, and no one can do it in four minutes. So we are having a State of the City on October 3rd, so I alluded to that, and a lot of people can come, you're invited to that, the Health and Wellness Center here in Desert Hot Springs on October 3rd. You can find that through the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce. And if you don't want to buy lunch, there's seats on the outside that you can attend for free. And so we were able to answer, we had some Q&amp;A session, all of us sit up there and answer questions, and you can usually get about. I'm not as aggressive as some of the other mayors in the Coachella Valley, I like to grab the mic and talk a lot, but try to answer the questions the best I could for the city of Desert Hot Springs. I know it's way early to talk about Halloween, my wife decorates right after 4th of July. She has one of her favorite holidays, but the Rotary Club here in Desert Hot Springs will be hosting its annual Halloween event at Mission Springs Park on October 26th. So keep that on your calendar, I'll keep reminding you of that. There was a comment up here about STR tracking, our short-term rentals, I think you said that went to the wayside, it didn't go to the wayside, because we get a report every week that we are still tracking those, so check your weekly reports, you'll still see that in there, of exactly what... still see that in there, of exactly what's going on, and how many calls we get for service, and then how many are actually going through permitting and those types of things. And then there was a question about Varner Road. This is in the city, most, the problem, the problem part of it is mostly in the City of Cathedral City, so it becomes another jurisdiction's issue. It bothers our residents and constituents, because they drive on it, and we have a gentleman who shows up quite a bit, because his wife has received two flat tires on that road. He's actually gone to Cathedral City's city council meetings and complained about it. We've worked for years to help Cathedral City find solutions for this, because they don't see it as a priority to fix, because most of their roads in need are within their community and not in the outskirts. So the Coachella Valley Association of Governments have taken on the responsibilities of trying to design this. We had to find reasoning to do that, and I say "we" because I represent the city on the transportation. And so about three years ago, sitting down with Tom Kirk, the executive director, we talked about the blow sand areas, and most of you have seen that we were now received over $50 million for Indian Canyon, and we're designing that right now, which will be ready next year for construction. We're designing Palm Drive, will be eventually designing Palm Drive, but part of the overall plan was to also look at Varner Road as an access to Interstate 10. How many times we get Interstate 10 blocked off? Not a lot, but it has happened, and then you have to drive through the Coachella Valley Cities. Varner is just the right road to be able to get around some of that traffic. So this gives us an opportunity to use as that, the county's bought into it, other cities are buying into it, so we're in the process of, as Mr. Betts alluded, planning for that right now with design. It'll eventually hopefully be four lanes, and hopefully this will kickstart Cathedral City and their portion of it. Lot of work has to be done, never happens fast enough for anyone, and it's not gonna happen, you know, real fast here, but we're pushing it at the transportation level. It's the same as Pearson and Highway 62, the signal lights, we started that process years ago, and we're finally to design and hopefully construction next year-ish? We're crossing our fingers? Twenty-seven, a couple years down the road. So twenty-seven's gonna be a big year, we'll have Varner reconstructed, and we'll have the light at Pearson finally reconstructed. But I know, it's tough when it comes to government because of the process a lot of times, so I apologize about that. In my last comment, I wanted to take a moment, this is kind of a serious situation, and I wanted to bring it to light, because I do think this needs to be brought to light. So there was a gentleman that was following our police department around, and he actually ended up harassing multiple council members. We are passionate in this world today on some, our politics a lot of times, probably 90% of us aren't, I shouldn't say us, but about 10% really are passionate about politics. But when you get to that point of, you know, violence, it's gone too far. And people believe their freedoms of speech are okay to say the things they say, and, you know, even though you have a thick skin as a politician, sometimes it gets to you. But some people take it to a different level. And recently, Mr. Gardner actually had the bigger threat out of him and myself. I live in a small gated community, so maybe that protected me a little bit, but Mr. Gardner did, and this individual threatened his property. And with that, I wanted to thank our police department for stepping up and taking the proper actions that was needed and getting the DA involved. This individual received two years felony probation, has pleaded guilty, and will receive one year of work release. If the jails weren't overcrowded, he most likely would be in jail. And we say this because we are five people, and even though we debate really hard up here on a lot of issues sometimes, and don't seem to get along, for the most part, I would never want to see harmed under any of us who are representing you and the community as almost a volunteer. We do get a small stipend, I'm not gonna say it's for free, but for the most part, elected officials are people representing you and the community. You can be passionate as much as you want about the issues in this community, but when you take it to that level, it's bad. And this is the first time in 17 years that I've had my life threatened four times beyond the city council. And this time, this person was finally reprimanded the proper way. So I wanted to bring that to light. His arraignment is coming up in a week, and he will be, has pleaded guilty. So with that said, anything you wanted to add on that? No? Okay.
No, it was, it was a very frightening situation, and I would really can thank the PD for the hard work that they did in bringing this case forward. I was surprised that it went as far as it did, and, you know, I'm pleased with the outcome. I don't want to see anybody get in trouble, but when you start flashing assault rifles at people, it gets a little scary. So thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move to public hearings tonight. Our first on our public hearing is the ordinance amending chapter of Title 17, zoning ordinance creating seventeen, chapter 17.8, visitors-serving district. Mr. Clark?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So in our pursuit of updating Title 17, the zoning code, this is really the last district that has a substantial residential component, so once we complete this, we can close out our LEAP grant that we had through the state that helped pay for a lot of this effort. So the two chapters in this district provide areas appropriate for accommodations, goods, and services intended primarily to serve visitors to the city while respecting the surrounding residential neighborhood. So these districts are where most of our hotels, motels, spas, and resorts are located. And we are seeing a resurgence in interest in renovating and expanding the existing hotels, the spa, as well as getting inquiries into new ones in these areas. So this is an update to the zoning code to make it consistent with the general plan. This new chapter combines and simplifies the text for the two visitor-serving districts that are currently in two separate chapters. Visitor-serving mixed was in the mixed-use district, and visitor-serving commercial was in the commercial district, and that made it confusing for staff as well as applicants just to find the information. So a little bit about the two districts. Visitor-serving mixed is a less intensive district and contains small to medium-sized hotels, a lot of single-family and multifamily housing, and limited commercial uses. Visitor-serving commercial is the more intensive district and contains small, medium, and large hotels, multifamily uses and limited commercial, very few single-family homes in this district. This district, visitor-serving commercial, also has a lot of vacant land that could be developed for lodging uses. So there is two concentrations of these districts in the city. North Palm Drive, just north of Pearson, in the dark purple, you can see the visitor-serving mixed area, just north of downtown in Flanking Palm Drive. And in the pinkish color, you see the visitor-serving commercial, where a lot of the larger hotels and resorts and spas are located. Very similar situation on Hacienda, Hacienda being the spine here, with visitor-serving mixed on either side, and the larger hotels and spas in the, in the pink area, visitor-serving commercial. So some of the changes that have been made on the residential side, we just basically referred to the residential districts chapter, we did a lot of work on that, no need to reinvent the will here, so all the same standards and guidelines in the residential would apply to these districts, both single-family and multifamily. For commercial uses, these chapters are a little bit different, they're intended to accommodate boutique-style shops, restaurants, art galleries, gift shops, coffee shops, and other similar small-scale specialized shops. So basically, a lot of the types of businesses that would be serving and catering to the visitor-serving clientele. So shopping centers and strip malls are prohibited, and parking is encouraged to be to the side and the rear of the commercial structures. Most of the changes came in the lodging section. One thing that we're trying to encourage is the mid-century architecture. It's a tie-in to the historic architecture of Desert Hot Springs, the resorts and spas. It's not a requirement, but it's something we're trying to encourage. And then also, there's a new requirement to have amenities, and that would be dependent on the number of rooms and the room count. So from one to 15 rooms would be two amenities, and up to, you know, 100 rooms or more would be six amenities. So these amenities can include swimming pools, spas, massage rooms, yoga meditation and exercise spaces, racket sports, long games, you know, the list is pretty long. And we find that our hotels and spas want to provide these amenities anyway, to help encourage the guest experience. One thing the planning commission did change is they upped the number of amenities by one for each of the categories from the original staff recommendation. The other thing we wanted to do was encourage this investment in renovation, so to reestablish an inactive hotel motel spa, that is, would be an administrative use permit, staff-level review. We are trying to encourage the revival of vacant lodging without making the process too burdensome, but at the same time, we have some minimum standards that we have to apply, such as ADA access and trash enclosures and those sorts of things. So those are AUPs. When it comes to the height limit for these districts, we have a conflict here between the general plan and the old zoning code. General plan provides for two to five stories for spa resorts in the visitor-serving districts. That's impossible to build more than three with the current 30-foot maximum, which is the maximum in each district. So what we've done is we've included a change that allows the planning commission to approve a building height greater than 30 feet with a conditional use permit. And just for reference, the Hyundai Hotel, four stories max on Palm, is about 50 feet tall. One thing we're trying not to do in the ordinance is create a situation where we're creating a lot of non-conforming structures and uses. So the CUP would allow the hotels and spas over 30, over 30 feet to expand, such as Desert Hot Springs Spa, Azure Palms, and others. Kind of the last change I wanted to highlight was the camping glamping, lot of requests and interest from that, from the hoteliers. We wanted to set some parameters around that, so it would require a conditional use permit. The site must be on a parcel, five acres or more, shielded from view from the adjacent residential. Obviously, permanent restrooms and showers provided on site, and then must provide the same amenities as the lodging, the standard hotels, hotels and spas. So that's kind of summary. Our recommendation is to adopt chapter 17.18, visitor-serving districts, and find the project category exempt from CEQA. And I'd be happy to take any questions that you would have.
Thank you, Travis, great report. We're gonna have questions to staff from the city council. Do you have any questions before I open the public hearing? I have two down here, we'll start with Mr. Betts.
So under visitor-serving mixed, that's in this item, right?
That's correct.
And there's a sentence in here that says, either commercial or residential development is allowed, but not concurrently on the same property.
That's correct.
So we weren't, were we talking about allowing somewhere in the conversation, California somewhere, a lot of meetings we go to, is the idea of having both commercial and residential in the same property? And this would seem to go against that thinking and that trend. Why would we want to exclude commercial with residential, residential with commercial?
So I believe the reason that was put in there is because especially visitor-serving mixed, there is a lot of residential area, and I believe was put in there to protect that residential area. And we do have two other mixed-use zones, mixed-use corridor, mixed-use neighborhood, and then we changed our downtown commercial to also be mixed-use. So it's my understanding that was the intent that a code does provide for live-work type of opportunities within these districts, and that's just the AUP staff level.
Okay, I know, who was it, the property that Two Bunch Palm owns, the big huge vacant lot? Part of their component was full-time apartments and visitor-serving use. I think that plan went through, maybe the development agreements expired, or the plan's expired already, but that would no longer be allowed?
Not on the same lot.
Okay. And visitor-serving mixed, the mixed part, I guess, is spa and commercial?
The fact that they're, within that zone, there are a lot of hotels and spas mixed within the visitors, the single-family and multifamily neighborhood.
Okay, all right, got it, all right. I'll go with your plan, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clark, just a couple of quick things. Mr. Betts brought up the Two Bunch property. Is that still governed by their specific plan that was adopted?
It is, the specific plan is still in effect.
So then that wouldn't, then these zoning changes wouldn't affect-
No.
-that specific plan, okay. Second one that I had was the number of amenities. Trying to work on an inventory of possible spa properties, following up on our spa revitalization ordinance. And what we find are a lot of very small ones left over from the 50s, and that have been converted to apartment buildings, that could be reconverted back into spas. But if you're requiring two amenities for anything with under 10 rooms, and you look at some of these small ones, and they may have six, seven rooms, and the only amenity they're gonna probably have is their pool. So would that, that would then preclude revitalizing some of these spas then, wouldn't it? In back, putting them back into the spa column as opposed to the apartment column?
Well, the amenity list is pretty broad, so we, you know, intentionally established it broad, so something like a yoga meditation area within that would count. Any kind of racket, well, racket sports is probably not applicable, or long games, that sort of thing.
Pickleball.
Yeah, maybe not pickleball. So we'd be pretty liberal with that, the idea is just that you're-
So then that would then be up, is that, is it restricted to that list? Or is it, if somebody came up with something creative, you know?
I believe the way it's written is, it gives the director the ability to, you know, basically make that decision.
That gives me a little bit more comfort level on that. Okay, but that's all I've got, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, we'll go to public comments. We're gonna open the public hearing at this time, we'll take testimony in favor, opposed, or neutral position. Don't have to have a speaker card, you could just come up and start speaking by stating your name, you'll be given three minutes. I don't see anybody rushing to the podium. Final call. We will close the public hearing at this time, and we'll open it up for more discussion and/or motion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I like this, particularly the last piece in our rezoning efforts, and it's really a key component, because if we're going to get back to a more robust tourism economy and a more robust tourism-driven piece of our budget, this will be a key component of doing that, and we can piggyback on the enhancement of the spa revitalization ordinance and the growing effort in outdoor tourism and people wanting to visit Hot Springs. So I would hope that my fellow council members would adopt this, because I think it's just, it's a great step in the right direction.
Is that a motion?
I will make that a motion, if you would like.
Well, I was gonna go the way, you made that great speech, but I guess I'll second it now.
There's a motion and a second, any other comments? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. This is the first reading of an ordinance of the city council, creating the following chapter of Title 17, zoning ordinance, chapter 17.18, visitor-serving districts. The ordinance will return on October 1st for a second reading and adoption.
Move to the administrative calendar, item number two is agreement for public improvements with Snyder Investments LLC for Pods Project Development Permit Number 22-4, 654640, 19th Avenue. Mr. Porras?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, before Mr. Porras gives the staff report, I just wanted to make a few opening comments on this. Staff was in receipt of the objection from the Water District, and in collaboration to ensure the project is compliant, we have conditioned the project on porta-potties until a long-term solution for sewage disposal is determined. So just want to make sure the council's aware of that. Also, too, as your city manager, I know the priority of the council, I hear it a lot, you know, from a job creation, from an economic development creation is a priority. So we work with developers to move projects within reason, which is, which is a judgment call. I am recommending this improvement agreement, which obligates the developer to finish the public improvements, which is the streets, curb and gutter as well, to move forward with a temporary certificate of occupancy. So, Mr. Porras?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This item is regarding the agreement of public improvements with Snyder Investments LLC for the Pods Project Development Permit Number 22-4, and the address is actually a correction, it's 64640 19th Avenue. There's an extra five on there, that's not correct. On March 28, 2023, the planning commission approved development permit number 22-4 for development of 60,000 square foot building that will be utilized by the Pods Moving and Storage Company. The project has been under construction and is now close to completion. The developer is now seeking to obtain a temporary certificate of occupancy, but there are still some outstanding public improvements that have not been completed. Therefore, per the city's municipal code 16.8.50, and the project's condition of approval number 30, the developer is requesting that the city council approve the attached and proposed improvement agreement with corresponding securities. The proposed agreement will authorize the issuance of a temporary CVO or certificate of occupancy, and allow the developer up to three months to complete all the project's improvements. Those project improvements include off-site asphalt with base, off-site concrete, which includes curb gutter, sidewalk, cross gutter, ADA- off-site concrete, which includes curb gutter, sidewalk, cross gutter, ADA ramps, and the off-site payment markings and signages for a total of $181,224. The developer required to also be required to pay all applicable administrative fees for processing this agreement. Attached is a draft agreement, the project plans that were approved by Planning Commission, and the conditions of approval of the project identifying that condition of approval. And I know we have the property owner here in case you have any questions for the project. Staff is recommending the City Council authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the agreement for public improvements between the city and Snyder Investments LLC for public improvements related to Pods Project Development Permit Number 22-4, located on 64640 19th Avenue. Thank you. That was my staff report.
Thank you. Before we get to council member comments, we're going to open up the public comments. If anybody would like to speak on this item, you can come forward, state your name. Last call. All right, we'll close public comments, and I'll go to council member comments. No one down here? I always seen the focus on this side. Anyone? Go ahead. Okay. I do, it's just the way, I always look this way. Mr. Betts?
Because we talked too much of this in the hearing. So question on the address. It says 654640. Was that also in the legal notice, or is that just a typo on the agenda?
It's a typo on the agenda.
But not in the legally noticed document? Okay, good, because we've had them get held up for that before.
Yeah, your recommendation actually has it correct, too, 64640. So I just wanted to read it for the record.
Okay. And we had a letter of communication from somewhere. I don't see anything presented to the council. Is that here?
Yeah, it was emailed to the council earlier, so I've made reference to it. But I don't have it on the-
Was it made available to the public on the, at the public podium?
It was not.
Okay, I would hope that we would, when we get letters from people that want stuff entered into the public record, that it be made available to council on the dais and also on the podium. What was the content of that? What was that letter talking about?
It was making objection to the TCO that the city was going to issue and very specifically in relationship to the potential connection to the private sewer.
Okay, I take that was from Mission Springs Water District?
That is correct.
And I see them here. They didn't step up the podium to object. Did they change their mind? Have you got reached, are they satisfied now?
Yeah, we communicated with them to let them know what the adjustment was, which was the porta-potties.
Okay, so I'm going to assume since I didn't see anybody step up the podium that they're comfortable with the arrangement that instead of a sewer connection to Mission Springs Water District, that it's going to allow porta-potties?
Public comment's already called. You can't, this isn't, this isn't a back and forth.
I'm not interacting with them.
You're looking at Mr.-
Well, I could look at you and ask the same question. It's okay.
Do you want us to answer?
I don't want an answer. I'm just making a statement. It's okay, please.
I'm sorry, Brian was going to get up and come answer your question. Do I need to reopen public comments for that?
I didn't tell them, if you want to open the public hearing, ask your-
I don't think there's necessary, because this item's mute at this point. They're not going to, the objection that they made has been heard, and the developer's not going to utilize that facility.
Okay, so anyhow, I'll get back to my questions here if I could. Thanks. So, okay, so I just want to, you know, I'm, when somebody sends a letter and takes the time to send a letter, especially from another agency, which to me, which as I read it, seemed to indicate some significant objection. And then I get to the meeting, and that objection's gone, or I'm told that it's gone. I don't see them step up the podium. I just want to make sure that, you know, normally the process is, is that we require a developer to get approval from Mission Springs Water District if they have jurisdiction over for sewer. And if they don't, then we go get approval from somewhere else, some other agency, State Water Resources Control Board. And, but we're not getting those approvals in either case. We're just putting up porta-potties.
Yeah, for a temporary solution. And there was an anomaly there that there was a private sewer there. So that, which created this anomaly.
Okay, and so, I mean, there's other developers, I think, who would love to be able to put up porta-potties in lieu of some stuff to move their project along, so.
It's not a permanent solution.
Okay, but is that temporary solution available to everybody?
It is. There, well, again, the anomaly that was there, we're working through a process to solve the solution. So that anomaly doesn't exist throughout the city.
What's the anomaly?
It was a private sewer system in front of the project.
Okay, well, all right. Okay, well, if I didn't, I'm not going to carry the water for anybody else if they don't want to carry it. So I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I'll just allude to this issue so that the public understands we're full transparency. There's a sewer line that will eventually be dedicated to Mission Springs Water District in the city of Desert Hot Springs for infrastructure to the new wastewater treatment plant that has not been dedicated yet. So developer had to come up with a different solution, which is porta-potties for the short period. The water district had a letter of opposition on using the private system, and they met what their obligation was to not allow that. And we're moving forth to allow this business to get up and running and have this business here in Desert Hot Springs. So I think when we as a city reach out to, for developers to make sure we pull out the red carpet and make sure that businesses can get their business open, this is something the city of Desert Hot Springs does well. So I want to thank staff for all your hard work on this. Is there any more comments or questions before we move a motion? Dan, yes?
This is in the resolution, item 13, page 5, Utility Deposit Statements. I just don't understand it.
So with this project, and maybe this would answer it, we require security on that to ensure that the project is delivered. And with that, there is a bond going to be submitted to make sure those public improvements are delivered.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion then that we adopt the staff recommendations and approve the Agreement for Public Improvements with Snyder Investments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second, any more discussion? Yes?
So this is a typical performance bond with a proper surety, you know, issuing company. It's not a private bond with the private, is this actual like?
It's a, it's insurance, it's a bond. It's a performance bond.
From a licensed bond issuer?
Yeah, yes, it is.
Okay, we've had that problem in the past before, so thank you.
I didn't know there was unlicensed bond. Is there unlicensed people out there doing that, too? All right, so with that said, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Move on to item number three, which is Defirmative Development Impact Fee Agreement with Snyder Investments LLC for Pods Project Development Permit Number 22-4. Corrected address is 64640 19th Avenue. Mr. Porras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is regarding the very same project, but this is regarding the deferred development impact fee agreement. The city imposes development impact fees that is required by developers to pay their fair share of the cost to construct the infrastructure that will be necessary to accommodate and mitigate the impacts and burdens on the public generally generated by the new development that is necessary to protect the safety, health, and welfare of persons in the city. The total corresponding DIFs for the Pods Project is $292,200, with a breakdown of $166,800 for circulation system, $5,400 for fire suppression facilities, $6,600 for general facilities, $5,400 for law enforcement, $108,000 for storm drainage improvements, which brings the total to $292,200. The developer is requesting that the city council entertain and approve the proposed development impact fee deferred agreement with a lien agreement. The proposed agreement will allow the payment of the DIF fees to be deferred for a term not to exceed one year and to be paid in payments in an amount of $25,000 and zero cents per month until paid in full. There is a schedule that is on the agreement and on the staff report as well, showing the $25,000 payments to be made up until September 1st, 2025. The draft development agreement is, I'm sorry, the draft deferred development impact fee agreement is also attached. And staff is recommending that city council consider a request from Snyder Investments LLC, who's a developer, to enter into deferred development impact fee agreement with attached lien agreement, which would allow the developer to defer the development impact fees in an amount of $292,200 and make $25,000 monthly payments until paid in full. And should the city council approve the developer's request to defer the DIFs and enter the agreement, authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the agreement. Thank you. That was my staff report. I'm glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we get to questions from the city council, anyone would like to speak on this item in the audience? Last call for public comments. We will close public comments this time, and I'll go to any questions the council may have. Yes, sir?
Danny, you did mention that these are secured obligations, so that if the developer does not perform, we still end up with being made whole, the city, correct?
These are through a lien, correct. And if they're to sell the property, then he would have to pay it in full prior.
Great, you know, and then I'll make a quick comment, and since we're at that point. I really want to commend staff for both this item and the item before it, for thinking outside the box and getting projects moving that benefit the city of its residents and still protecting the city and helping encourage more development where we need it in the city. One of the comments that I get at across the valley very often is how great it is to work with the city of Desert Hot Springs and our staff when it comes to development projects as compared to other cities that shall be named, remain nameless, but are immediately north to us along Indian Avenue, that have a hard time with projects. And so I think that is a fantastic testament to our staff and being able to be creative and think outside the box. The porta-potty temporary solution until that sewer is constructed, I thought, is a brilliant way of getting around that. So I really want to commend our staff and also commend us to our city council and hope they vote to approve.
Any other questions? I looked that way, but I saw you, and she pointed at you first.
I just wanted to compliment staff on the way you did this and the way you did the resolution with the security lien, with what happens if there's a default, the administrative fees for doing the payment structure, and the attorney fees if we should have to do that.
Mr. Betts?
Does the agreement specify legally binding agreement that, you know, attorney fees and whatever else is covered to the city?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trusting you guys out there took care of it. And I didn't see the interest rate. Do we have an interest rate applying to this?
We do not have an interest rate.
Why? Is there no interest rate?
We just don't have one.
Yeah, so we just didn't, we made sure that we recovered the cost of delivering the project, but did not charge interest. I don't know if the code required it, and I don't think our past practice has been, but it's a good point.
Okay, so, well, developer might not think it's a good point, but.
But there is an administrative fee.
Okay. And I want to disclose that I did have conversations with the applicant, the project developer, on this issue prior to the meeting. I'm supposed to report that, and I am. That was mostly just to try and get a better understanding of, you know, what they're, we're looking at. The only thing to say is we've got some other developers in the city, people with projects that, I mean, sometimes I think I'm in an alternate universe here. There's people who probably heard Gary say everything's smooth as heck. And if they're listening, they're just cussing at the screen right now because they've got exactly the opposite view. So the long time we've gone, in the past, we've gone on about this issue. Mission Lakes Marketplace fought really hard over development impact fees, and they did huge favors for the city taking installed projects. So I'm glad to see that we're taking a little bit relaxed approach here. And it doesn't seem like it's too long of a term, so I'm in agreement. Okay.
I'd like to move staff's recommendation one and two.
There's a motion and a second, no further comments. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Move to item number four, the Formation of Underground Utility Districts, Area Number 2, Indian Canyon Drive between 19th Avenue and 20th Avenue. Mr. Porras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is regarding the Rule 28 funds for underground formation of a underground utility district. Explaining a little bit, Rule 28 funds are Southern California Edison, all customers and repairs pay into Rule 28 program to fund projects to underground electrical facilities. On June 3rd, 2021, the California Public Utilities Commission, the CPUC, issued a decision that discontinued this program and this program funding. So since then, there hasn't been any funding, funding collected or any funding increased. Desert Hot Springs has a balance of $969,978 of Rule 28 funds that are to be used for undergrounding electrical facilities. These funds will expire in June 2025 if they are not allocated to an active Rule 28 project. The required steps to allocate them would be, first one is to identify a project. The second one, to form an underground utility district by resolution, which we started that process today. The third one would be to submit the resolution to SE to begin the project design. SE completes the design, develops a new engineer's estimate. That's estimated to take about 12 months. Then finalize the project and release the RFP for construction and begin construction. If we approve this resolution and move forward, this keeps the project in 2025 costs, or, I'm sorry, 2024 costs. In 2025, costs will escalate, and an increase in project would actually cause the scope of work to be reduced. There are some criteria Rule 28 projects must meet, and here are the five main criteria. The first one is undergrounding will avoid and eliminate any unusual heavy concentration of overhead electric facilities. There are multiple locations of overhead electric facilities citywide where undergrounding will definitely eliminate all the heavy concentration. So that's a given fact. Number two, the street or road or right-of-way is extensively used by the general public and carries a heavy volume of pedestrian and vehicular traffic. We had to identify which roads they were. We based it on ADT, annual average daily traffic. We also based it on connecting roads, arterios, in and out of the city and throughout the city itself. The street and/or right-of-way adjoins or passes through a civic area or public recreation area or an area of significant scenic, cultural, or historic interest in the general public. We also identified where those were at, on our parks, on our civic spaces, and mapped them out. The street right-of-way is considered an arterial street and major collector road as defined by the California Transportation, California Road System Functional Classification System. The state identifies certain roads as major arterios, minor arterios, and so forth. In order to qualify, it had to be in arterial street or major collector in the actual system already classification system that we already have. And/or if it has wheelchair access limited or impeded by existing above-ground electrical and/or telecommunications infrastructure, including padmounting facilities on sidewalks or in other areas in the pedestrian right-of-way that in otherwise are not complying with the Americans with Disabilities Act. In this process, we actually identified this map. This is the map for Caltrans, where they provide the California Road System, Road System Functional Classification System, and showing the arterial streets and major collectors in purple and in green. So in order for these funds to be used, it has to be identified or along these corridors are purple and green. If it's in any other corridor, it would not qualify. You can see that these are almost all of the main arterios in and out of the city with some connecting arterios within the city itself as well. The ADT here is shown on the main arterios. We revise or we reviewed which arterios are the major ones. We have Palm Drive at 29,000 ADT. It goes down to about 14,000 ADT. Then you have Indian Canyon at 23,000 ADT that goes down to 16,000 ADT. It's annual average daily traffic. So average daily traffic. So Two Bunch Palms is about 11,900. Hacienda's about 8,000. Pearson's about 8,000. Little Morongo and Mission Lakes are about 4,000 traffic per day.
We need to meet those criteria also?
No, it just has to be, it just has to be a heavy.
Only on the previous screen, the green or the?
Correct, correct.
Thank you, sorry.
But in order to identify a project, we reviewed all of them, and we focused on the highest and then dropped down to the lowest. So we can say where were the highest impact, what would be the highest rated roads where it's actually visible and create the highest impact. This is some main arterios that met that criteria before and actually had overhead lines. So you can see, let's see, on Pearson, the red showing on the south side does have overhead lines in that area. On Indian, the west side of the street does have overhead lines that are within the city. The Little Morongo obviously has those very large overhead lines that are not actually, cannot be underground due to the size and the voltage. There's also Two Bunch Palms has some sections, Hacienda has some sections, Alcatillo has some sections, West, and Choya has some sections as well. Based on these, you can actually also see the public site. So you have some civic areas, you have the parks, you have our city hall, you have a fire station, you have Cabot's Museum there. So there are some that are adjacent to that that will qualify based on this, on this showing here. We have 969,978 available Rule 28 funds. Based on that number, we could, a project that could move forward is about 800 to 1,500 linear feet, depending on the size of the poles, depending on how many, depending on the electrical lines. But it's estimated about 800 to 1,500 linear feet. But it's estimated about 800 to 1,500 line of feet. If you go back to this, 800, 1,000 line of feet is very small. These are miles, these are quarter miles, these are, I mean, it's not anything compared to where we can do major quarters. It's only going to be a very, very small section. Based on that, we went around and we looked at civic areas. Do we have parks that are completely have have overhead overhead? There's not any park that directly has any overhead in the park, but there are some that have them adjacent. We looked at major arterios, which major arterios heavily used by traffic in and out of the city. There are some that have them, some do not. Palm Drive does not. Indian Canyon does, for example. What is the highest impact? What is the lowest impact based on the community? And we also look at economic development. Obviously, when we have new projects, a a big hindrance in development is undergrounding these poles because of the heavy cost. A cost, a project that's $200,000, now you have $1 million to underground a line of poles is is almost pretty much not going to happen. Based on this, a while back, we had identified a project on Palm and 8th Street as being a project that was of interest because of the location, because of the hotel site that possibly was going to happen there. This project initially was was conditionally approved by S E. When we first moved on to, or when we second moved on to the next step, we actually notified that even though it met certain criteria, it was not in the actual location, it was not adjacent to the street, but actually behind the alley, and it was owned by private owner and not a public agency, therefore this could not qualify. So we immediately moved on to the next steps. We did this process for a few sites over and over with S E, and and that's when we determined that this corner here on Indian Canyon is the only remaining one that is within the city. It is an entryway, and it does meet the criteria. Here is a corridor, the Indian Canyon from 19th Avenue to 20th Avenue. It is our entryway. It has a big lot in a corner that actually has had developments, developers come in here for new development interests that will have utility lines that have to be undergrounded that could shoot down the project. There's also development to the north that is already completed that would remain overhead for a long time until you the city funds it or somebody else funds it to underground those projects. Again, underground utility district area number two, Indian Canyon from 19th to 20th Avenue. This project is about 1,400 line of feet. The project would be estimated within the available funds. It is an entryway to the city. It is high traffic volume. It is a north-south corridor in and out of the city. It will improve visual appearance and it will promote economic development to those sites that are available for future development. Based on this, staff is recommending that city council adopt a resolution calling for a public hearing on October 1, which would be the next city council meeting, to ascertain whether the public necessity, health, safety, or welfare requires the removal of poles, overhead wires, and associated overhead structures within area number two, which is along Indian Canyon between 19th Avenue and 20th Avenue. That concludes my staff report, and I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Good report, Danny. Thank you very much. We're going to open up to public comments. Would anybody like to comment on this item?
Nobody coming forth. I I'll start with comments. You know, when I first saw this, I was like, oh, man, that's, you know, we've got so many areas of public need in our communities. When we first started using this program, I learned a lot when I was first elected. Many years ago, we used Rule 28 money to underground along Pearson, so I believe it was Cactus to, it was past West, it was Choya. And it was, it was over $1 million to do it, so expensive. Southern California Edison doesn't like to underground very often because they can't see what's going on. They like to have the poles up, but our beautiful therapeutic breezes don't always help out the situations here. As a volunteer fireman, we used to run on power pole fires all the time because of the high winds here. But over time, they've gotten, they've helped, you know, build the infrastructure stronger. So I started looking at other areas in the community, and, you know, as as Mr. Porras alluded to, you really couldn't put a whole project together. So I drove down to that area, which I utilized the Indian Canyon on and off ramps quite a bit to avoid some daytime traffic along Palm Drive. And when you get right there at that corner where the gas station is and then along there, it will be a hindrance in the future. We saw this as a major hindrance. We had to do a lot of work as a city council and as a city administration along Little Morongo when the cannabis industries were building there. They weren't going to let them build. Edison has the right to force them to underground certain things, but we had to work a lot of, I wouldn't say deals, had to work a lot of agreements behind the scenes to allow for those poles to stay in the positions they were, which there's no argument about whether Edison should have put them where they did at the time they did 30 years ago, or they should have put them further into the right of way. But either way, this is going to enhance the opportunities as Indian Canyon will will start to grow, especially with the warehouse businesses. I can see a lot more restaurant and retail and other type of businesses wanting to develop theirs. I mean, with the Amazon center coming in and over 1,000 jobs, and which we just approved tonight, the Pods project, which won't, I don't know how many jobs it's going to be, but it's going to continue. There's another warehouse that's getting ready to build, and you're going to see a lot more jobs, you're going to see more businesses grow, and this is a huge hindrance to businesses to be able to under, to take on the task of undergrounding these. So with that said, I I believe I'm going to support this project.
Ms. Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Danny, one quick question. Is there any way we can recoup this money with the developments going in later on in that area?
Like a reimbursement?
Yeah.
So this funds, and it's it's actually completely ran by S E, so S E is the one that's going to actually do the whole project.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And that's just a one real, I'm going to get down here, guys, I promise, I'm going to go right here and then meet and then right back to you guys. Rule 28 is a percentage, a very small percentage of what the taxpayers pay, and goes into a fund, it grows. But the sad thing about it is this is it. They're getting rid of the program, so there won't be any more of these funds in the future, which is sad for us, because even though it took a long time to grow these pots of money, it was another pot of money to help out in situations.
Ms. Pye, do you have anything? Ms. Gardner?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment real quick, too, Danny. I was amazed, and I agree with the mayor, it's a, it's a corner that will, this will really enhance that, especially since, you know, moving up past what's called Coachella, what's it called now? Between the Palms, between, yes, between the Springs, that's it, between the Springs. And this will really enhance that. There's several vacant parcels there that are across from the Harley-Davidson, a couple others that I know there's been some interest in that. What I was amazed at is your analytical process in figuring out where we could spend the money. That was fascinating, I have to admit. And there's a lot of other places, like the mayor said, that we could have used that, but to narrow it down to where it really mattered and what we can do with the funds since the funds are going to go away, this makes perfect sense, so I'm happy to support this.
Ms. Pitts? Oh, did you have a comment?
Yeah.
Well, this is all got to figure it out, huh? So Danny, really, the presentation was excellent. You really walked us through a nice proceed, process. You know, when I'm, I'm looking at this originally before seeing your presentation, I'm thinking there's a lot of other areas, and I am thinking now, when you're at Cabot's Pueblo Museum, and you're looking out at Mount San Jacinto, you're looking through wires. There's a lot of different places that we could put this. And then you had a map that you put up that showed the distances that we could get out of that. The red line that you had ran past Cabot's was longer than the line down on Indian because Indian is much higher voltage lines, correct?
And Cabot's is on Desert View. Desert View is not a federally classified road.
I thought you showed it, red and green was?
It wasn't that one.
Okay.
It wasn't Desert View.
All right. So anyhow, and I, and I think the part about making those parcels more attractive to developers who otherwise would be discouraged if they had to underground those lines is what sold me on this. And this isn't our money we're giving up. This is just us deciding where this will do the most good for us. It is ugly when you drive up there. Those poles definitely stand out, so you sold me. I wasn't sold walking into the meeting, but I am now.
Ms. Pye?
With, answering your question, with the physical impact, there is no physical impact to the city or the property owners within the proposed district for the underground work. The city's costs will be nominal in order to respect, glasses.
We're laughing because we're the same problem.
Inspect the the traffic control and repaving during construction. It is estimate, is estimated that the cost will be less than $5,000.
All right, well, on that, I'll make a motion that we adopt the formation of the underground utility district area number two, Indian Canyon Drive between 19th and 20th.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, no further discussion, please vote.
Great job, Danny. Great job.
Motion passes unanimously.
We had a few items before from the extent counter. We'll start with item number six, the professional services agreement with JNS Media Specialists for Citywide Marketing Services. Are you asking for a full staff report?
A brief staff report?
I don't have that right now.
Okay, well, in giving the staff report, it is a pretty short staff report, so I'm going to give it in its full, complete version. So the City of Desert Hot Springs is the fastest-growing, most diverse, and safest city in the region. As the gateway to the Sand to Snow National Monument and Joshua Tree National Park, residents and visitors are just minutes away from the many attractions and activities that make the region such an attractive destination to live and visit. City offers beautiful views, fantastic outdoor activities, exceptional resorts, and of course, our most special water. Just beneath the surface exist both hot and cold aquifers. I'll save all of that, because I know you guys know all about that. But moving along, with all of those great things in mind, in June of 2023, the City of Desert Hot Springs contracted with JNS Media Specialists to provide specialized tourism marketing focused on the curation of city-driven, tourism-focused, social media, and website pages with the sole intention of reinforcing and promoting the City of Desert Hot Springs as the spa city. Since that time, JNS Media has successfully completed the following: tourism brand identification and refinement for marketing purposes, the establishment and management of tourism social media channels, tourism marketing strategies, media buys, and of course, management of that, design creative of tourism promotional materials and collateral, and coordination of videography and photography for very specialized tourism marketing all throughout, not just the Southern California region, but actually nationally, and target audiences that we want to have come and travel to Desert Hot Springs. In the previous fiscal year, the city contracted with a separate firm to provide citywide marketing services while JNS focused on the tourism marketing. At this time, the City of Desert Hot Springs is in need of a singular marketing agency of record to assist in shaping its story and creating a strategic marketing plan to enhance its position, yes, as the premier destination for health and wellness, but also focusing on community engagement that improves resident and valley-wide perception, advancing economic development, and supporting cultural heritage and diversity within our community. So staff is recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with JNS Media Specialists for citywide brand development, creative, and marketing services in an amount not to exceed $100,000 annually for one year, with the option to extend for additional two, I'm sorry, with an option to extend for two additional one-year terms, subject to a duly-approved budget. In terms of the fiscal impact, I do want to point out and note, and I did make reference to this, in the previous fiscal year, we actually had these contracts segmented out. So we had a tourism contract with JNS for $50,000, and then we had a separate marketing agency, INKE, that we contracted with, and that was a $60,000 year contract. Anticipating this recommendation to the council, we actually included that in the budget that came before you in July. And so we've consolidated those services under one agency of record and actually lowered the cost by $10,000 in doing so, and we feel that we're going to have a much better marketing strategy moving forward that's going to really focus on our residents, our community, community engagement, and it also encapsulates and brings into play social media and marketing for the police department as well. So that concludes my staff report. Happy to address any questions.
Mr. Pitts, you pulled the item, I'll let you go first, and Ms. Gardner.
So are they saying that they do Menifee, Beaumont, Indio?
No, so in the, in the attachment, what they were actually referencing is that we should be utilizing our website and our app, very similar to how those other cities are doing. So those were example cities that they had pulled as part of our strategic planning sessions. So they work for all sorts of different agencies here locally. I don't have the full list, but I can tell you, they also are the agency of record for Visit Greater Palm Springs.
Okay.
That was it?
Yeah, you know, this is probably just as, all right, I got it. Thank you.
Ms. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a great idea to combine into one agency, because it's going to make it a lot easier and make our messaging a lot more cohesive and identifiable. You know, it's always wise to have just one agency, not two. For, for, for people that are, that are in the audience and watching on TV, we played a commercial a couple of three weeks ago that they did for Desert Hot Springs, for Visit Desert Hot Springs, that was, I got a standing ovation from the audience out here because it was so well done. This firm, JNS, is, if you could give an award for an Academy Award for, for creative marketing, they would get it. We've used them at Visit Greater Palm Springs, which I chair, for a number of years, and they knock it out of the ballpark every time. I have never seen better marketing than that provided by Visit Greater Palm Springs, and to have that same agency providing marketing for our city, I think is absolutely fantastic. And I'm excited to see what they come up with for us, and I've seen some previews and some stuff, and I tell you what, we're going to have, no other city in the, in the desert is using them, Visit Greater Palm Springs does, we're going to have better marketing than Palm Springs and everyone else, so.
So we're piggybacking off of, we're piggybacking off of what the Visitors Bureau is doing?
We're not piggybacking on it. No, this is our own, they're, they just happen to be the same agency.
I know, but it's a nice tie-in.
It's a great, yeah, because we can, we can, we can segue in it, and, you know, having a, spending $100,000 on marketing when we have, that, that's less than 10% of our tourism revenue, that's a really great return on investment. So I'm in favor of this.
Any questions down here? I don't entertain a motion.
And I'll move that we adopt the professional services agreement for JNS Media Specialists for Citywide Marketing Services.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Can I take public comments on that? I apologize. Was there anybody that wanted to speak on that item? So sorry. I think I got moving. Item number seven is award professional services agreement to see our associates for professional public outreach and urban planning services for the Active Transportation Safety and Connectivity Plan. Mr. Haker's not here, who's taking that?
I just had a quick question on this one.
Okay.
So had some people point out that the numbers seem to be rather large for this $416,130, but that this is a grant that is coming into us, correct?
That's correct.
So this isn't money coming out of our general fund, this is money that we have got through an active transportation grant that aligns with the SOCal, you know, programs.
And, and earlier, actually, it's, it's California Department of Transportation, it is a state grant. We received $368,400, and our match is $40,707. And the reason it's a little higher than our standard outreach one is because we had to follow the Caltrans process for deliverables, for the way they, all their tasks that they assigned based on the grant application and what they want to receive and see as part of the grant funds itself. So we did receive two pre-proposals. One was for $409,107, and the other one was $415,657 and $18, and $18 cents. They are within a range, so, so it is an accurate number.
And so the end result of this work product is now we've got something that we can go and seek other grants to construct.
Correct.
I don't know, but Cali Mesa, they put in a pretty extensive bike path.
Yeah, we.
And they started out with a SCAG grant, like this is from Caltrans. So, okay, good.
Yeah, we had a bicycle pedestrian master plan in 2016. We had two Safe Roads to School Plan in 2008, 2012, and then this will connect all of those and update all the projects that we've completed so far, and also go into our safety. So they'll do reanalysis of our safety, our accidents, pedestrians, vehicles, whatever that needs, and make recommendations as well.
Okay, good. I just, I want to make sure that's clear for the public. Thank you. Move to approve.
I had a motion and a second. I do have some public comments, please come forth.
All right. Hi, I'm Elliot Lou Griffin, and I own Make America Amazing. Actually, with this, we did look into the grant. Thank you, sir, for talking us a little, to us about it. And we looked into trolleys, actually. We kind of like been looking into this idea for the transportation, public transportation for the people. And we actually been looking into trolleys for this. So if you guys do award the grant, I would like you guys to have them specifically look at trolley destinations. And so that was the one, okay, so the, oh, I say we could implement it right now with the $416,000. I talked to the trolley people, they want 120 I talked to the trolley people, they want $120,000 for the trolleys. They're 2020 propane trolleys. I don't know if we could implement this without getting a actual run of the mill, but I did talk to them where we could actually go out and buy two trolleys and pay somebody 30, $40 an hour to drive our trolleys around. They could go from the community centers to the welfare office. So I don't know if we have to put this money into planning as our approach as to if we could implement it. So I would be looking at those two things. Like I said, they are propane trolleys, they are 2020. They do have two available. They're 120,000 apiece. They do have some less expensive ones for 57,000. But we're saying that if you could come along, we could just implement it, buy the two trolleys, 240,000, and hire the drivers to start driving today. We don't have to pay for no other, this will help get the kids to school, kids could ride the trolleys, you know, it'll help them get to the welfare office, it'll help them get to the State of Brothers, it'll help them, we do have a system where the two trolleys would go up Palm Drive, spin around, come all the way back around the city, then come back to Palm Drive. I don't know if you guys are interested in that at this time, or if you guys are going to hire these people, then we would like to see the trolley implementation developed, if that makes sense. So that would be my only, but if we could use this money to implement it instead of using it to, to look at it, I would go for that one a lot better than just using this to look at it. You know, if we could use it to implement it, like I said, 240,000, we go out and buy the trolleys today, tomorrow they'd be around there picking up people. It'd be that fast. Paying them $40 an hour, you drive, you got your passenger endorsement, you can drive today. You already, probably already work for RTA. We're paying $40 an hour, and at 400,000, we'll be, we'll have it for a whole year at least. So thank you.
Thank you. I do have a motion by Mr. Betts, so I have a second.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
And the last item pulled on the agenda was number 11, designation of voting delegates and alternates for the 2024 CalCities Annual Conference. I can just answer this real question, real quick. There's only one member of the City Council traveling to CalCities, so I told the city manager, there's no reason for us to have to vote on a delegate. We're just, they're assigned to it. That'd be Mr. Nunez.
Okay, so I was wondering why, something we're supposed to vote on was consent, but doesn't the league require that we officially designate them? So if Mr. Nunez is going to be the one going, I will nominate Mr. Nunez to be the voting delegate and make that motion.
Mr. Second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Any public comments? Please vote.
You're going it alone, huh?
Yeah. All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Sorry, Alan.
Waiting for Councilmember Betts, Mayor Pro Tem Pye. Motion passes unanimously.
If anyone did not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting and would like to speak in public comments, you can come forth now and have your three minutes. These are on items not on the agenda. Before, I see nobody coming forth, we'll close public comments, and before we adjourn the meeting, the next, the City Council will meet again on October 1st. The Planning Commission meets on October 8th. And October 10th, the Public Safety Commission meets, and the City Council will meet for its second meeting in October, on October 15th. No further business in front of us. We are adjourned.